Order. Roll call?
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven thirty P. M. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner is attending by Zoom. Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.
Stand for sound meditation.
Mom in the silence, please, for all those who are in bereavement and for those who are in crisis. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you, first of all, grateful and thankful that you have allowed us to assemble in these chambers. We just ask that, by the power of your spirit, that you allow us to make good and prudent decisions on the behalf of the city residents. We ask for you to look in on those who are the least unfortunate as it gets colder and seasons change, that you be a special help. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes from the Wednesday, November first, two thousand and twenty-three, city council meeting and bills for payment on November seventeenth, twenty-second, and December first. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
I've got a little presentation to open the meeting with. So I'll read this. We've got a member of our community that's retiring and we're going to celebrate that today, Mr. Humphrey Rhodes. Resolved by the council of the city of Erie that whereas the city council of the city Erie wishes to pay special tribute and recognition to Humphrey Rhodes for his faithful service to our community-
Recording in progress.
Recording in progress.
We good? All right. Resolved by the council of the city of Erie that whereas the city council of the city of Erie wishes to pay special tribute and recognition to Humphrey Rhodes for his faithful service to our community and to celebrate his upcoming retirement. Humphrey is native to San Rafael, California, and is one of six. He later moved to Colorado before going to Borring, Oregon, for his very specialized training. Whereas Humphrey is a gentle and kind soul who is cautious when it counts, he was a huge supporter to Shelley when she was diagnosed with cancer. He's an ambassador of what is good in his work. Humphrey is a very, I don't know where I left off, so we're just going to the second paragraph. Humphrey is a very gentle and kind soul who is cautious when it counts. He was a huge supporter of Shelley when she was diagnosed with cancer. He's an ambassador of what is good in his work and very willing to try. He handles lots of situations from big city streets to rural festivals, walks at Presque Isle and other places. He is gentle with people he meets. Whereas Humphrey came to work in Erie almost exactly seventy years ago on Shelley's birthday, quite an awesome present, he works with all kinds of people regularly to provide support and therapy. Some examples would be story hour at Blasco, stress and therapy relief for medical professionals, friends of the library, very advocacy causes, lending a paw and warm up America. He has been part of efforts at Anna Shelter Because You Care and even shockingly participated in making cat toys for orphan angels. Whereas Humphrey Rhodes is a very cultured member of our community, he regularly attends music festivals, poetry readings, theater, and is a subscriber to the Philharmonic. He had an acting role in a promotional video for Rolling Hills Radio. He is an ambassador of his work everywhere he goes. And in light of today's vote regarding an ordinance for pedestrian safety and sidewalk closures, his efforts and advocacy cannot be ignored as the city of Erie and Erie City Council celebrates his retirement. So if I could ask Humphrey to come up front to the podium so I can greet him with this. All right. This is Humphrey. He's celebrating his retirement. Congrats on retiring.
Good job, buddy.
He's just like, I know this real deal.
He takes his retirement seriously.
He's like, I'm resting. I'm done.
Nice job, Mr. President. Nice job.
Thanks, Mr. President. All right. Moving on to repository sales. Is there any repository sales today? Any repository sales today? Any repository sales today? Public comments. Would anyone like to come forward for public comments? If you would state your name and your municipality of residency, we're not enforcing addresses today.
My name is Fred Attefra and I live in the city of Erie in the Baldwin Park neighborhood. And tonight I'm wearing my T-shirt in memory of the late Judy Hume. What you believe in for yourself, if you don't demand what you believe in for yourself, you're not going to get it. And Judy Hume was basically the mother of the ADA. So I'm here happily to, as we're poised to adopt the sidewalk closure ordinance. It's a great move forward. However, it is imperative to set fees for the permits, penalties for violations, so that there is funding available to enforce this ordinance. We saw a great example. The Ampar mentor told me that when the Catholic Church finally removed all their stuff in front of the cathedral on Tenth Street and opened the sidewalk, and they came back to her and asked her to close it again for three weeks, she said, no. They were required to put in an alternative sidewalk. And as Humphrey could tell you, if he could speak, he would tell you that that was a superb example of how to do that. He didn't have any trouble figuring it out at all. This should be the norm. It should not be an exception. And if we do that, it's not necessary to have to put up signs at either end of a sidewalk for mid-block closure. So I hope we see more rather than less of that. The public right-of-way accessibility guidelines calls for an accessible, an alternative sidewalk and should not take people off their route to travel. And the notification of closure should be before a pedestrian needs to make a decision about how to proceed. Unlike what is currently going on at the southwest corner of Tenth and State, where there is a closure just towards the corner, but nothing, if you're coming from Peach Street, to let you know you're going to run into a closed sidewalk. Also, that sidewalk shouldn't be closed. Behind the chain link fence, all there is is a porta potty and there's no reason that sidewalk couldn't be open. Identification and correction of sidewalk closure should be as high a priority as code enforcement in response to complaints about vegetation, et cetera. So I hope that this ordinance, the guidelines and the regulations that are promulgated after this ordinance is passed will address how it's to be enforced. Also, entities receiving permits or loans from the city should be in compliance with sidewalk maintenance. Erie Concrete and Steel, which is receiving an enterprise loan on their Raspberry side, is not maintaining their sidewalk. Waste Management, which is on Raspberry between Sixteenth and the railroad tracks and received a permit to operate a waste transfer station, does not maintain the sidewalk. Both there's grass growing over it and there's overhanging vegetation. And I've brought that to the city's attention numerous times. I want to encourage everybody out there, and I know you're watching, that if you're utilizing sidewalks and there are issues with the maintenance of the sidewalks or the accessibility of the sidewalks or the proper snow removal, to call eight one four eight seven oh one 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 and report that these problems. Especially, snow removal should not block sidewalks with berms. And I can tell you that there are chronic abusers of that. And I'll bet sure as heck that they're going to do it again this year. They shouldn't be doing it. Neither should city trucks be piling snow that blocks the corners or blocks access to the pedestrian buttons. I'm wondering, where are the places that people who are in house can go to use sanitary facilities on the weekends and in the evenings? When is there going to be a public restroom in Perry Square? As we see the retirement of our city public works director and his assistant, I want to make sure that the promised sidewalks at Baldwin Park are constructed. There was so much money spent on the pickleball courts, we should have sidewalks. I still don't understand how traffic signals were upgraded on State Street since two thousand and eleven without installing APS. How can all the money be spent on the sidewalks on State Street South of Perry Square be done without installing APS signals? I guess that's about it. But again, thank you very much for recognizing Mr. Rhodes, and thank you for the ordinance for the sidewalk closures.
Thank you, Fred.
Good evening, council. My name is Dominic Bazanca, thirty-six, ten Harvard Road. I'm here to talk about the Ravine Drive project that may or may not be on your books. A few months back, I came here to address you when I found out the amount of money you spent on just getting a design. And that was, I was at the meeting last week for that design presentation, and I'd have to say that you got one heck of a job on your hands, considering where it's at and what traffic it may or may not serve in the future. So if you look at it, you got the six eighty-six thousand, just on what you spent on the blueprints. Cost of demolition was somewhere close to two hundred grand, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. So you're pushing a million right there. What that meeting last Thursday said, a lot of stuff was left out. They put some gingerbread on there and told the residents that, oh, we're just going to set up a crane and bring a few bridge beams down here. There's going to be a little traffic delays. Well, what they left out was that they didn't tell the residents that that former structure has not completely been removed. What they didn't tell the people that are living down there is the amount of construction traffic alone, that's going to be in and out of their neighborhoods. And not just showing up and dropping something off and trying to get out of there with a tractor trailer. It's going to be dump trucks sitting there all the time, idling in front of their houses. The regular construction traffic that's going to be parked there. People were here from the neighborhood, and some of them had some righteous concerns about traffic on Ravine Drive, just getting in and out of the yacht club for the functions that go on down there. Well, tie-in tractor trailers waiting, dump trucks waiting, cars trying to get in and out of there in normal traffic. There was a lot of stuff left out for those residents to take a bite out of. Now, if you think about it, what that fellow said was you're looking at close to, by the time they're done finalizing design, close to two million dollars for that bridge, which would carry, if it goes, which would carry nothing heavier than a snowplow with a load of salt on it. And it's designed for PennDOT style traffic. Now, if you don't think you're in over your heads with that, you're fooling yourself. So I also mentioned to you the last time I was here that you're looking at what was a sixty-foot span now expanded to a hundred and twenty feet. In the detour around that hundred and twenty feet is three stop signs. Cost of demolition beforehand, what you spent on design and the cost of projected construction, you're looking at one million dollars per stop sign that you want to spend out of our money, no matter where you get it or who you tell us you're getting it from. It's our money. Three million dollars a stop sign. I don't think anybody of you, any of you, would want to justify that kind of an expenditure. Now, I can't see how anybody of you would even want to make the argument, considering that all the people who are here from Frontier that came to see what was being shown to them, not one of them said anything about the hardships they've endured for two years trying to get around that. Two years they've managed to get by without that bridge being there. And now three million dollars to drive around three stop signs. If you guys think that's justified, considering what you got listed on this paper, what you want to do to our fees and what you're going to spend on the police department, you want to come up with three million dollars per stop sign to drive around a ditch? If you think that's justified, you should really start looking deep about what your concerns are for this city. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council, mayor.
Hi, Jason. My name's Dave Forrest. I live at twenty-one fifty-three West Fourth Street. And I'm here to talk about code enforcement. Specifically, I'm concerned about code enforcement. And my concerns are shared by a lot of people. I think all you have to do is look around at a lot of the neighborhoods in Erie to realize that, generally speaking, the code enforcement department is ineffective in terms of enforcing the code and improving properties. But I'm not here to talk generally about the condition of the properties tonight. I'm actually here to talk mostly about rental properties and a right-to-no request that Jason's familiar with, because I put a right-to-no request in in May to get a list of all the rental properties in the city of Erie, the contact information for the owner, and the date of the most recent inspection. And a document was provided to me. It was a PDF. It was, there's some debate about how long the document was. I put it at sixteen hundred pages. And it was presented in such a way that it was impossible to read, because each record for each property was spread across multiple pages. So I sent a second right-to-no request to the city, and I asked for that to be released in Excel, which would be the original format and something that could be, would be readable. And the city turned me down, and I appealed. And I lost on appeal because of some case law that indicates that the city is not obligated to provide that information in a spreadsheet format. And I accept that. I mean, there's no legal obligation that the city provide that in a spreadsheet format. But that's really a policy issue for all of you, whether or not you want to provide that in a spreadsheet format. But I think a couple things. One, there's no dispute that the information is public information. That data I asked for is data that you gather as part of the city's rental registration and license and inspection program. And I think Jason would admit it's public information. So there's no dispute with the solicitor about that. The dispute is what kind of format it's going to be provided in. Now, certainly, I would love to get it in an Excel spreadsheet, because it would be the easiest for me to digest. But I'm willing to take it in some other format as well. But I think it's imperative that the city provide this public information to me and others who are interested in some kind of readable format, because it's in the public interest, and providing that information is a hallmark of good government and a government that's committed transparency. This is serious business. This isn't just a casual request. I think we all know what the condition of the properties are in this city and what the rental properties look like. And it's about time that we got serious about it and we took a look at it. And that's why I and other people are asking for this information. You all received Susanna Faulkner distributed a letter last month, signed by four leaders of neighborhood watch organizations, asking for this data that was originally requested in May to be delivered to us in a spreadsheet format. And maybe you don't want to do that, and there are probably legitimate reasons why you don't want to do that, or at least the city solicitor doesn't want to do it. But I believe it is possible to get that information to us in some readable format that both parties can agree to. And so what I'm asking you to do, both you and the mayor, is to direct Jason to work with us, to come up with some compromise so that we can get this public information to us in a readable format so that we can take appropriate action on that information. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll be waiting for your response. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Martha Wachukku, municipality, city of Erie. It's funny that he brought up good government and transparency. The thing about getting older is that you get wiser and you see the world better. And I have been dispelled of the illusion that this is a good government that cares to be transparent. So let's talk about the new business tonight. A resolution authorizing and directing the city of Erie, the city of Erie mayor and city council of Erie County hereby requests a statewide local share assessment grant of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for one SWAT armored vehicle. Money for war, but no money for the poor. It's really embarrassing. Your greed and your inherent violence is showing. I'm very grateful to the Palestinian people, because they have shown me that Democrat and Republican, you are all the same. You do not care about working class people. You do not care about people. In fact, I worry that you have no humanity left in most of you. And it's really a shame that between people coming to city council, asking for protection for workers, zoning protections to make sure people don't get displaced, fighting gentrification, getting money for the poor, any single thing that you could have used this money for, you instead are planning to use it for more police militarization. It's a shame. It is a great shame. And I will continue to come here to dispel the illusion that you stand with the people. So because no matter the issue, you all act the same. I'm going to sit here and go through the fourteen characteristics of fascism, because you very much act within these. And though this was written for a national perspective, is very much reflected here locally. As above, so below. So number one, a powerful and continuing nationalism, disdain for the recognition of human rights, identification of enemies as scapegoats, as a unifying cause, supremacy as military, which we can say you are doing with the local police right now, rampant sexism. We've seen that here locally by one of our representation right now. Controlled mass media, obsession with national security, again, going back to you continually funding the police department before anything that the poor need. Religion and government are intertwined, going back to the conversation that happened during the study session where you were afraid of even considering the idea of not praying during a city council meeting. Corporate power is protected. Erie is a corporately-owned city. There is no doubt about that. And our mayor supports them. I would even argue, he works only for corporate power, not the people. Labor power suppressed, again, going back to how the city does not try to protect workers. Disdain for intellectuals and the arts. I would argue most actions by the city council is anti-intellectual, as you seem to think that the public is stupid. Obsession with crime and punishment, again, going back to the police. Rampant cronyism and corruption, we know, I don't even have to explain that one, and fraudulent elections. So again, I don't have the belief anymore that you care about what people need. I know you're going to go ahead and do whatever you want. But I just wanted for the public that is watching to read those points and just shame. Shame on you. Shame on you. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Moving on to ordinances for final passage.
Council file number sixteen three ninety-six, official ordinance seventy-one, two thousand and twenty-three, and ordinance amending Article seven nineteen oh one and other streets and sidewalks, and more specifically adding Section seven nineteen eleven, construction closures of sidewalks to ensure the public safety of pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic when sidewalks are closed due to construction, redevelopment, and/or repairs. Sponsored by Ms. Flores, seconded by Mr. Nelson, the council file ordinance, bill number sixteen three ninety-six, and now known as official file ordinance seventy-one, two thousand and twenty-three, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance seventy-one, two thousand and twenty-three by yea, seven, nay, zero. Council file number sixteen three ninety-seven, an ordinance appropriating the sum of three hundred and three thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This contribution is from the Department of Community and Economic Development for Police Vehicles and Bikes. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file ordinance, bill number sixteen three ninety-seven, and now known as official file ordinance seventy-two, two thousand and twenty-three, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance seventy-two, two thousand and twenty-three by yea, seven, nay, zero. Council file number sixteen three ninety-eight, an ordinance appropriating a sum of two hundred dollars from appropriated and anticipated revenue from donations made by Value Home Center. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file ordinance, bill number sixteen three ninety-eight, and now known as official file ordinance seventy-three, two thousand and twenty-three, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance seventy-three, two thousand and twenty-three by yea, seven, nay, zero. Council file number sixteen four oh one, an ordinance appropriating the sum of eighty-five thousand, fifteen dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the two thousand and twenty-three Justice Assistant Grant. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file ordinance, bill number sixteen four oh one, and now known as official file ordinance seventy-four, two thousand and twenty-three, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance seventy-four, two thousand and twenty-three, finally by yea, seven, nay, zero. Council file number sixteen four oh two, an ordinance amending the following sections of Article five twenty-one, five twenty-three, and five twenty-seven, to reflect the present duties, obligations, and powers of the towing review board, and to reflect the present process to appeal any parking, towing, and impounding charges paid under protests before the towing review board. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file ordinance, bill number sixteen four oh two, and now known as official file ordinance seventy-five, two thousand and twenty-three, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance seventy-five, two thousand and twenty-three, finally by yea, seven, nay, zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number sixteen three ninety-nine, an ordinance of the city of Erie, county of Erie, and Commonwealth, Pennsylvania, adopting the general fund and certain other budgets for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file ordinance, number sixteen three ninety-nine, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt- City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16399 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16400, an ordinance fixing the tax rate for city purposes for the fiscal year 2024, beginning on January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file ordinance, Number 16400, haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16400 by yeas seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16403, an ordinance amending codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part 9, Utilities and Public Service Code Title V Sewers and Water Article 933, Sewer Rental Section 93302A. Sewer rates by increasing the meter quantity charge per 100 cubic feet per quarter for the first 70 cubic feet from $3.65 to $3.74, and the next 4,930 cubic feet from $3.47 to $3.55. And usage over 5,000 cubic feet from $3.25 to $3.33, and by increasing the large volume user charges per 100 cubic feet per month for the first 23 cubic feet from $3.65 to $3.74, and the next 1644 cubic feet from $3.47 to $3.55, and all other usage over 1667 cubic feet from $3.25 to $3.33. Sponsored by Mr. Troup, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. The council file ordinance, Number 16403, haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16403 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16404, an ordinance amending codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part 9, Utilities and Public Service Code Title VII, Other Public Services Article 951, Residential Refuse Section 95109, Garbage and Refuse Collection Fee Increasing the Quarterly Collection Fee from $27238 per year to $28760 per year. The annual collection fee shall be assessed against each dwelling unit and billed on a quarterly basis. Sponsored by Mr. Troup, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. The council file ordinance, Number 16404, haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski.
No.
Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16404 by yea six nays one on first reading. Council file number 16405, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $399,993 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This is a contribution from the Department of Justice for implementing crisis intervention teams. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file ordinance, Number 16405, haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance, Number 16405, by yea seven nays zero on first reading. Mr. President, this takes us to new business.
Any separations? I'll be separating four through 11.
How about two?
Okay.
We already have four through 11. We already have four through 11.
I'll group them together, I promise.
Okay, I have separations number two and number four through 11 in new business. Any other separations? Moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Nelson. Number two, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, a resolution to approve the annual budget of the Erie County, Erie Area Council of Governments for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2024. Whereas the city of Erie is a member of the Erie Area Council of Governments, the ECOG, and whereas the ECOG has proposed its annual budget for its financial activities for the 2024 calendar year, which will be voted on for approval at the ECOG's General Assembly Meeting on December 13th, 2023. And whereas the city of Erie has reviewed the proposed annual budget for 2024, a copy of which is attached heretofore and finds it to be in good order, and whereas the city of Erie acknowledges its proportionate share of the member dues as listed herein, it is hereby resolved by the city of Erie County, Pennsylvania, that the proposed annual budget for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2024 is approved by the city of Erie, adopted this 15th day of November, 2023. Mr. Brzezinski?
How much do we pay?
Is it, is it listed on there?
No.
I don't think it is. What do we get for the, what we pay? I was on the original COG back in 19, whatever it was, my first term on council. And the only thing we ever did was save some money by buying salt in bigger groups. I guess I didn't do enough research, but I just don't know what the COG is doing now.
Yeah, I'm, uh, we went over this at the first budget session. It was in our general governance thing. I think it's page 83 of the thick book if I, if I, if I'm pulling those numbers correctly. One of the things is, for example, we sell our millings, our street millings. That was one that is getting a six-figure return on us. I can't remember the number, like maybe 200,000. Uh, there's a few different spots that our connection to them is bringing us some fair revenues. And then, you know, yeah, the salt, you know, the little discounts. But, um, but the milling's one was a pretty big one for us recently. And I think, I think I'm ballparking, but I think it's about 200 that we're getting back. I don't know what the fee is to be associated, you know, connected to them. And obviously, I presume we're the lion's share of it.
The fee, yes, that's my question. I didn't know how much.
Yeah, I know, no.
Give and take.
I might be.
And we'll pass it before we know.
Mayor?
I don't have any detail with me about that. I apologize. I go to all the meetings and I think it's a good group and I think we're getting a lot out of it and participating in it. Plus, just be able to work with everybody around us. It's not, we're not just all isolated with this group. So I do believe in it, but I don't have any of the details with me either, so.
I was just gonna jump in. Can folks hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So I'm just checking the, the budget and I believe it's around $20,000 a year, the membership, for being on ECOG and as public safety liaison. I've been a part of a lot of what ECOG has been hosting around our, our local EMS crisis and our need for more coordinated services for emergency medical services throughout the county. And so that has been extremely beneficial. And I, I do hope that we continue to be a part of that at every level.
I couldn't find the number quickly, sorry. It was on a different page than what I thought it was.
Did she say 20 grand?
Yeah, yeah.
Call for a question.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes yea seven nay zero.
As far as my separations, four through 11, I kind of have those just grouped together. They're all related. Uh, these are a number of resolutions regarding the statewide local share assessment grant through the Commonwealth Financing Authority. There were some questions on it from the public, so I felt like it was, uh, significant to separate it and address some of that. This is state money and there's a number of categories to apply for to bring that, those resources back into our community. The things that are available to us, they're not necessarily all the things I want, but they're the things that are available. And, you know, city council and the, and the mayor of Erie are putting these resolutions on here to direct so that we can apply for as much things as we can get as the state will give us. Some of them, the code enforcement vehicles are, um, are huge, you know, huge need for us, a pressing need with capital expenses. Uh, some of the other things may be items of, um, uh, beyond maybe even what we would need. Um, but they're the things that the state makes available to us. And it demonstrates a lot of where the state's priorities are and where they presume that urban communities' priorities are. But it's just simply what's available to us. And it looks as if we're applying for pretty much anything that we were able to get our hands on. So, um, that's all I had to say about four through 11 as a group. I'm not sure if anyone else has anything to say about any of them specifically.
No, I would just like to echo that, um, when it comes to grant money, with any of the expenses that could be saved from the general fund, we're going to do everything we can to bring the grant money here. So I know that it might not be what our community needs at the moment, but we're hoping that in the future, we can continue to apply for more grant funds for all things that our city needs desperately. But until it comes up, we apply for what grants are available sadly, and they are not prioritizing some of the more specific community needs. But grant money is good money at saving us general fund having to use those expenses.
Any other discussion?
Yes, um, while I fundamentally agree with our colleagues, it comes down to the priorities of the administration. And so if you look, there's a broad number of categories and things that you could apply for. And it seems that, you know, that, you know, I've, I've sat here for four years and I still wonder, you know, when are the people going to get something? The people who pay the taxes in this city, the people who live here and work here. You know, when, you know, when are the citizens gonna get something? And when I look at this, I take, great. Maybe we do need a new SWAT vehicle. But I would much say, you know, give that $600,000 to the Roger Young Park. Let's, let's build them a nice, safe place to go and maybe we won't need another SWAT vehicle.
Ms. Faulkner?
I want to echo those sentiments. As someone who is a grant administrator in my other job, I think it's incredibly important that we are not just taking what we can get, but truly prioritizing what are the needs of citizens. And so as I looked more into what are eligible uses of this grant, the main purpose of it is to quote, "improve the quality of life in the community." And so I personally am, am not able to support nearly half a million dollars towards a new SWAT armored vehicle, given that 44% of our kids in the city are growing up in poverty. And this could have been an opportunity to invest in root causes of violence and poverty instead of simply meeting that need with what was available in grant funds for continued militarization of our police. So I'm disappointed in that. I understand there are limitations to it, but the guidelines are readily available on the Commonwealth, on the DCD.pA.gov website. And it's disappointing the lack of creativity that this process has brought in what the funding could go towards.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, just, uh, you know, we're talking about this. This isn't wasted money. The only caveat I have, and I said it at the budget session last night, if we're using this kind of money to build up a budget that we're gonna have to, in time, pay for, we're gonna be in big trouble. I don't see that here. What I see coming in here is pretty good stuff. Yeah, I mean, if you don't like the police, you don't like SWAT vehicles or whatever. That's personal preference. But if the money's available, we're pretty, pretty dumb if we don't go after it and get it. And I don't always agree with Professor Timber, you already know that. But the fact that his staff is going out there and getting this grant money for us is really a good thing. The only thing, like I said before, is let's make darn sure that we're not getting things that we're gonna have no way to pay for two or three years down the line. That's all I have to say about that. Call for the questions?
We can vote each one.
I'll make a motion to vote them all together if there's any further separations.
Second.
Any further separations from four through 11?
Only nine, please.
Separate nine, please. So moving the balance of four through eight and 10 and 11.
Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
Call for the vote on number nine?
Number nine, the resolution. The city of Erie mayor and city council of Erie here, Erie County hereby request a statewide local share assessment grant of $487,750 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for one SWAT armored vehicle. Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Ms. Faulkner?
No.
Ms. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Keys? Mr. Troup? Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson? Uh, resolution passes yea six nays one. This takes us to committee reports.
Ms. Faulkner, would you like to go first?
Sure thing. Uh, let me pull up my notes here. All right, um, speaking on a different, um, issue with the police, I know we already voted in favor for a first vote, but I do want to commend, uh, Police Department and City Hall staff who worked on the grant for the Department of Justice and the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. Uh, this will take EPD Crisis Unit to the next level, establishing a partnership with Safe Harbor for dual response. And so this is a model that's been used across the country and internationally for assisting folks who are having mental health and substance use crises. Uh, there's great evidence to show the positive impacts this policy has on the community, including things like increased speed of access to care, cost savings, better efficiency of officer time, along with decreased arrests, decreased jail admissions, use of force by law enforcement, decreased psychiatric hospitalizations, and less repeat calls for service. Um, this is something I've been advocating for in Erie since September, 2022, before I was on council, and I am deeply grateful for, uh, the time that went into this and looking forward to that being rolled out. Um, as I join you all from home yet again, since I have COVID, I want to urge folks to get the updated vaccine. Those of us in the chronic illness and disabled community call this time of year the October slide. Uh, and we all need to do our part to keep the most vulnerable residents safe. The new shot is recommended for everyone six months and up and will help protect you and our community from the new strains of COVID. And I can tell you right now, they're not fun. not fun. Uh, the vaccine is available for free to all regardless if you have health insurance. Only 5% of Americans have received this new vaccine since it rolled out in September, so please do your part and get the shot. You can schedule and find out everything you need at vaccines.gov. Uh, and then while I couldn't attend today, I want to thank the Benedictines for Peace for holding a peace walk at Perry Square tonight in support of a ceasefire in Gaza. Please take time to learn and find ways to support those around the world impacted by genocide and war, whether it is Gaza, Ukraine, the Democratic Republic of Congo, or any other corner of the world. We are so lucky to be here in Erie where we are, are safe and protected, but we also have so many folks who need whatever help they can get. Um, other than that, I will hopefully be joining the, uh, Water Authority meeting tomorrow, um, and then just catching up, uh, with other duties as soon as I clear this virus. So thanks, everyone.
Ms. Faulkner, can you, can you tell me, when did you find out about the grant with, uh, Safe Harbor?
Um, I, let me see here, within, hmm, I'd have to check my email, within the last week?
Okay.
That's the one that we voted on in new business, the DOJ COPS one. Number five in new business.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yep. Yeah. Well, I, when I heard they were applying for that grant, I think I offered Chief Spizarni a kiss and, uh, so, but that was in the middle of them having a turnover at the grant positions. That's really, really incredible. Thanks.
It's a huge win.
Mr. Tru?
Mr. President, um, um, Ms. Faulkner, hopefully you get well soon. Thankful to the City of Erie, um, my councilmates, friends, the mayor's office, and for, you know, during our time of mourning from Uncle Larry Meredith. Thank the mayor for coming to the funeral and delivering a proclamation, and also naming, um, I believe it was August 5th, from now on will be Larry Meredith Day, so we'll definitely be looking forward to that. Um, I spoke to the people at the Erie Downtown Partnership. They want to thank everybody, thank the city and the council for their support of all the programs that they're doing over there, and they want, they want to encourage, uh, citizens to look for upcoming program, and that will be going on still here in the fall and winter, especially around the holidays. So you can check their Facebook page, Erie Downtown Partnership. And before I finish, I want to leave you with a quote from Frederick Douglass, as you know, I do work with youth, and I think, you know, any decision that we make in our city, we have to think about our youth that are gonna be our upcoming citizens here pretty soon. Uh, Frederick Douglass said in the 1800s, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." So I think we should always remember that as we're giving our money, making decisions, think about our future with our children. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. It appears that the Erie Police Department is going to get some new vehicles, and it mentioned e-bikes. And if our officers are going to wear helmets on the e-bikes, then we need to start considering, make it an ordinance that anyone riding e-bikes should have a helmet. I've seen too many almost accidents with the e-bikes dodging through cars in, in traffic. Uh, it's ridiculous. All I can do is cringe. So we need to think about it, and I'm not far off that they probably should have some insurance. If they cause an accident, they have to have some insurance, just something to think about. Also, I spoke with a citizen who's very concerned about the corner of Old French Road and East 30th Street. I know that area well. There's a fence on the southwest corner that's higher than three feet, and it's very difficult for traffic heading east on 30th at the corner of Old French Road to see traffic coming around the corner from 28th, and they aren't doing 25. And so if you come out of 30th and you have your front end out there, the possibility of an accident happening or a death happening. Also, on that same corner, which would be the northwest corner, there's a white truck that parks at the corner. I'm asking code enforcement, if that's the right department, to put up a sign, no parking, make sure it's 30 feet from the corner, and if necessary, paint that curve yellow. So if you don't see the sign, you see that yellow, that means you don't park there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Keys?
Yeah, uh, this week I attended the, um, the redevelopment authorities meeting. Uh, I continued to monitor their progress on, uh, being able to, uh, work with AARP funding and to make sure that it gets into the hands of the persons that it was intended to. Uh, also, uh, attended the airport meeting today. The airport, uh, continues to, um, be hopeful that, you know, uh, that they're gonna be expanding and, you know, that their temporary flight is gonna be made permanent, uh, toward the end of the first quarter of next year, I believe. And, uh, we are hopeful that, uh, the things that they're doing are going to, uh, are gonna work, 'cause it's one of our greatest assets, and we need our airport, uh, working and with as much activity as possible.
Ms. Flores?
Um, we have a EMTA meeting coming up on November 20th at 4:00 PM through Zoom, and then we have a Blighted Property Committee meeting on December 13th at 9:00 AM. At the last meeting, there were a few properties that were voted on, um, that are going to be de- undemoted, and there's gonna be 10 that are demoed and one that is being privately rehabbed. For new business, five properties had been voted on to be added to the Blighted Property list. That list is over 250 properties long, and we also have tonight being the first night of the Neighborhood's Place Seasonal Overflow Shelter, so if you have any help that you know of people who need additional help, they need a referral from Erie County Care Management, and you should dial 814-SHELTER, which is 743-5837. So it's gonna be cold soon, and we do not need to have our community members out on the streets if there's a place for them to be warm at night. So that is all I have to report. Thank you.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes, sir. A couple of things, uh, Port Authority is working diligently to, uh, get the proper papers in place for the eminent domain of the coke plant. Other than that, uh, everything's under wraps until they finally get it done. Tomorrow is a meeting for the, uh, Erie Civic Center. Uh, there's a rumor that, uh, President Nelson's gonna dance at the Dancing with the Stars in January. Is that true?
That is true.
You and Humphrey?
Me and Humphrey.
All kidding aside, uh, they're doing a nice job over at City Senator, bringing in things, and, uh, Dancing with the Stars is one of their biggies here in January. Uh, I won't be dancing. Anyway, that being said, uh, again, expenditures, revenue, let's take, keep an eye on both sides of that, 'cause we keep on, uh, spending money, even if it's grant money, and I, grant money's good money, right, Jess? It still has to, there's no such thing as a free lunch, people. That's the bottom line. Somebody's gonna pay for it. No such thing as a free lunch. I think Frederick Douglass said that. Mr. Tru, that was a beautiful comment you made too about the young men growing up strong. Thank you for that, and have a good, uh, Thanksgiving. It's just a week away. Say good night.
All right. I, I had to go back and check the, uh, council file to figure, to realize that that, um, the Safe Harbor, uh, was on today's agenda. That was, um, and we just got an email about it. Um, but that was, that was listed under other services. That's why I didn't catch it. It was just, just other services, um, which is a really exciting thing. That's just thrilling. Um, we've got a couple of things, uh, coming up. This next month will be my last month as president, so we've got, uh, three ordinances that I think we'll have on the agenda to close out the year. Uh, one regarding, uh, animals, one regarding responsible contractors, and one regarding street namings. Um, this is our first meeting since the election, so I want to congratulate Ed on his reelection. And, uh, and also Kaz Katuska, our treasurer, was reelected. Uh, we'll have Tyler Titus and Kathy Schoff joining us, uh, next year. Um, I'm scheduling something with Kathy here soon, and I'm having coffee with Tyler in the morning. So we're, um, we're gonna hopefully keep, keep the speed up with that. Um, that being noted, that there will be an appointment to be made in January, and we will have some, um, we'll, we'll hopefully get out ahead of that and have some applications, uh, or some letters of interest as we design a process for it, um, so that we could really, as soon as the swearing in happens and the resignation of the two-year seat occurs, uh, whether two-year or four-year, either way, it's only a two-year appointment we would have. Um, but hopefully we can hit the ground running on that and have someone up to speed by maybe even our second meeting in January. Uh, three things, uh, looking through the budget, um, still with, well, let me say this, in sections 417 and 418 of our optional charter, it determines how it is the City Council changes the budget. Uh, it'll take four votes for anything we want to reduce in the budget, five votes for anything we want to increase. Uh, there's three things that I thought that the city should consider, um, looking at on the expense side, and I've got a, I've been working through, as the study sessions have occurred, um, I've been looking at the areas that I think that I'll be able to put forward for amendments to the budget. But three of the things, um, in the comprehensive plan, it called for a housing court, um, and as we look at plans for housing, the last plan we got to deal with it, first step was to, uh, to see a housing court happen. Uh, our solicitor and our planning director have a really important meeting coming up this Friday. We're bringing together a number of municipalities to discuss the need for it, to hopefully advocate to see the courts add that. The, uh, Emergent Care still has a number of capital expenses that, um, while, while they're usually on their own for this, I think the, um, EMS crisis continues to demonstrate that there is a need for us to, uh, support them in a greater way. Uh, as a, as the potential of an authority and a new fee, uh, from the county gets discussed, you know, it's really important for us to see that, uh, that the revenue that would be derived from that would be benefiting that entity. Um, if it turns out that they're getting a million and we're spending two million, that's a million lost for our community, so I want to be very careful about how we're looking at that, but it may involve investing more in Emergent Care now. And the third thing I say on the expense side is that, uh, I think the chamber made a compelling argument for their flights. And, um, I think that the city will have some responsibility to really take a lead on that as they recruit other municipalities, but I want to make sure that we're not, um, putting our neck out beyond our undue influence in the, in the neighborhood. I know there's a lot of municipalities that'll look at us and they think we have the money 'cause, 'cause we tax the most, uh, and then they'll make fun of us for taxing the most. You know, there's a, there's a two-headed, you know, there's two sides of the blade on that one. So I would like to see something maybe based on our population, maybe for the next three years, we put in 50 cents per person, 47,000, and then that way, the municipalities around us, uh, would have that as somewhat of a challenge, saying that, look, you, you guys will be using this resource as well, 50 cents a person for three years, uh, and, and try to, try to lead the challenge on that, uh, 'cause we really do, as an economic driver, uh, need to see the chamber's leadership on that. So that's what most of the time has been, uh, this month is reviewing the budget and looking into the concluding, uh, ordinances of the year. That's it for mine.
You know, Mr. President, uh, going back to that airport thing?
Yeah.
Uh, one of the things I asked the chamber about and I never understood, why aren't we going out there looking for corporate people to move their companies in here? If that happened, we would, when GE was here, we had people going to Chicago every day. So that Detroit-Chicago flight was a no-brainer. We can subsidize all we want to, but if we don't somehow include or lift our base of people, corporate sponsors, corporate companies, uh, we're gonna die, as simple as that. It's not gonna happen. We're gonna throw money away. I would much, much rather donate that kind of money to send out people to, to find out companies. This is a beautiful, beautiful city. Anybody who wanted to bring up kids would love to be here. We should tell that story, and in fact, bringing them in, uh, you know, step by step, but I think paying money to keep what we have is kind of like putting your fingers in, in the hole. There's more holes than you can fill, and it's gonna keep on dripping. So I, I'd like to see maybe a combination of both. I'm with you as far as helping them, but I want them to do something else besides say we need more money. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? On to the solicitor? Deputy Solicitor?
We have a report from the solicitor.
Mr. Mayor?
I just, I want to say a couple of things. First of all, uh, Mo, thank you for mentioning, uh, Larry Meredith. He was a wonderful person, and it was a big loss for Erie. I was, uh, honored to be there. Uh, I also wanted to mention the CRIS, which, uh, we're working hard on right now. Erie Insurance is very supportive of it, and with their support, uh, the CRIS, basically, we're looking at about 130 acres in the city. They'll be all spread out where new businesses can be attracted here and, and open up, and the additional taxes paid as a result of that would come back to Erie to reinvest in those communities and to pay for things that we might do on, uh, on a loan as well. So it's, uh, it's, it's very exciting, and, uh, it's not easy, but we're, we're trying to make this happen, and with Erie Insurance's, uh, support, we believe we're gonna get 10 million a year to start with in money coming back into the city, and that will continue for 30 years. Uh, I know there's, it's being slowed down a little bit now because in Harrisburg, they're talking about restricting the total amount. Right now, there's, there's no restriction on the CRIS. Depending on how much you bring in, you, you can get all that back. Uh, they're talking about maybe limiting it to 10 million. We're hoping, uh, it might be a little higher than that, and that they'll give us an annual increase as well. Uh, so that's, that's what we're working on, uh, with CRIS. I want to thank all of you for working on the 2024 budget, and of course, it's really a five-year plan as well that, that, that you're looking at. Uh, I welcome any questions. We've met a couple of times already, and we've got more coming. Welcome any questions, and if you have any input on improving it, we're definitely open to that as well. Uh, I want to do what's best for the people of Erie and everything that we do as a group, and, uh, the budget is an important part of that. Uh, last thing I want to just mention is, uh, one of the things I want to do is, with your help, is grow Erie. Uh, when I was, back in 1970, I was going again, and, and we had 140,000 people that lived in Erie then. Now we're down under 100,000. We've lost over 40,000 people. We think that's starting to grow back, uh, but that's really an important part of everything that we do, and when I was sworn in, uh, for my second term back in, uh, two years ago, uh, I, I set a goal that, uh, by the end of this decade, we get to at least a 10,000 increase in people here in Erie. Uh, and, uh, take that very seriously. I'm gonna work hard on that, uh, going, going forward. So thanks very much. Appreciate everything and look forward to working with all of you.
That meeting's adjourned. That meeting's adjourned.